Is the video ready to go? We, all right, very good. Thank you, everybody. We're about to begin the June 11th Town Council informational work session. Let the record read that the entire council minus Councilman Morris are present, and at this time, we will do a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God.
Okay. First item is the public works and town hall roofing. You want to lead into it, Holly, or you want Jay? It's up to you.
Yes. So, we brought the public works roofing repairs to Town Council late spring, early summer. And at that time, we did decide to include Town Hall as well. There's needs to replace the Town Hall roof in addition. So, we did release a RFP for both public works roof and Town Hall roof. So, we have that here before you. The town held a pre-bid meeting. We did had four local companies show up to that meeting. They did onsite reviews and measurements with Jay at both locations. And we do expect to have sealed proposals back to Town Hall by July 14th and before Town Council at our upcoming meeting. So, we wanted to see if Town Council had any questions about the scope of work or process.
Okay. But with Peggy, if you have any questions.
No, I don't have any questions.
Yes, I have a question, or I just wanted to ask. So, I think this, I mean, this looks good to me. As far as, I was hoping Greg would be here. He's the construction guy to have all the great questions, but anyway.
Holly's a construction guy, too.
All right, well, that's good to know. So, but I just wanted to point out that this would be a good opportunity for looking into solar, since we're getting new roofs put on. So, hopefully, that'll be the next step, maybe. All right, thanks.
Two questions. One is, what was the budget that we set for this?
So, we had set $60,000 for Town Hall and $50,000 for Public Works, Jay.
Actually, 60 for Public Works, and I thought it was 40 for here, but I'm not, alls I know for sure is 60 for Public Works.
Okay. And then I'll just echo my colleague's comments on solar. Actually, Jay, you and I had a discussion back in May about solar at the Public Works facility.
Yes, and just for the room and everyone else, so that, I've had Solar City and the other company that documented, I shared with you, came out. They would not change the installation either way, because we are maximum spread five foot at our facility. So, it would go on after the roof either way. I had them look at that for sure, if there's any infrastructure, something they would add. The only thing they recommended was a conduit chase down the one side of the wall, which we already have, because I ran electronics. So, it would be an afterthought. And they did come back to me initially with feel-good about it, but now they're coming back and saying, on the west side with that tree line, it might not be viable. But I'm still waiting on their findings.
Okay. Well, hopefully, we can look into that more. And then, probably not so much for the roof here at Town Hall, because I know it might have some structural issues, but possibly, we could look at doing solar in the parking lot or something like that, just to set an example for town residents on going alternative power. Thank you.
Sure.
I have nothing further.
I have no questions on this one.
Very good. Next, purchase of a public works vehicle.
Thank you. So, we did budget for the purchase of a public works vehicle. We're under a similar circumstance as we were last fiscal year in purchasing a vehicle, and that they go very quickly. So, we are, again, going to ask for not to exceed amount from Town Council. This is budgeted for our fiscal year of 23 at $55,000. We do have some trade-in vehicles as well that will help offset some of that cost. And do we have any, Mayor?
Housewoman, any questions on the new ride in town?
No, the only thing I'll say is that 121,000 miles does not seem like a lot of miles to like a normal vehicle that we would have as a resident, but you have to realize what these vehicles go through. And what they go through is hardship and wear and tear and heavy use. And so, I'm fully supportive.
Yeah, my only question was, is the budget amount enough? I mean, I'm not an expert on this, so I, you know, obviously, you know, but you're really going to, are you going to get a new truck or a used truck? Because that just seems cheap to me for the kind of use you guys get out of it.
Well, I anticipated a trade-in, because we were going to trade the one in, so I'm hoping we get somewhere close to 10 grand. I mean, we know, we all know how trade-ins work. Sometimes, they just lower the price. But we've dealt with them, and they're pretty reputable. And we also now, we used to get them pre-wired for snow plows and salt spreaders, and not just to save money, but we've had to become self-sufficient at our shop. We do that work ourselves now, just because you can't find the componentry and you can't find people to do it when you need it. So, we're going to do that in-house, and we have the stuff to do it. That'll save us about eight grand, having it pre-wired and the fuses and the front plow setup. So, I'm hoping we can. We've priced around. We actually looked at two trucks, but they're only lasting about 10 days once they get in. So, that's why we're kind of, we, you know, we want to, we'd have to do a work session, then the process, and that truck would be gone. So, I think we can do it as an answer.
So, yeah, so what happens? You get a nice truck in, it's there for 10, you know, it's going to be gone if you guys can't act on it. And, I mean, I'd be open to bumping this number up if anyone else would. Maybe it's not necessary. I'll just, I'll leave it at that.
You know, I always, that's usually my train of thought, you know, knowing that we're frugal here, and we're not going to just go blow another 10 grand because we give the authority. Because the only other alternative, if we were, you know, our heart was set on something that was 58,000, would be, geez, you know, I would just have to go ahead and authorize it and then come back to the council right away or call you up or all this other stuff. And I think if there's a, you know, a trust factor in the ability of Jay and Holly to, you know, negotiate the best price for the town, I have no problem bumping that up 10 grand, knowing that we don't need it. Just save us all time later. If we, you know, I don't think that's going to affect his or her ability to negotiate. So, I, I'm good with that. That's sort of like most things, you know.
As long as Jay doesn't get the extra stereo system.
I was thinking camouflage, but.
Timing?
Well, I want to make, you know, this is a work session, but we'll go ahead and bless it at the council meeting, and I'm going to have things lined up to have it happen sooner than that. And, you know, we've been in contact that the, they normally would tell us, hey, we have this truck that's going to be here ahead of the game. It'll be here Tuesday, and as long as it meets our bill, then we can do it. Problem is, Wednesday, it's gone.
Yeah, right.
So, I'm hoping sooner than later.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
No additional questions.
You want to ride shotgun, Peggy?
Uh-huh. Shotgun, I'm driving.
I just have a question. If we're going to allow the 65,000, how do we do that? Is it something we do?
It would be on the agenda next Thursday.
On Thursday's agenda?
It would just say 65.
Okay, so that won't be too late. Okay, good, thanks, that's it.
Okay. Next, we have the MOU, Safe Routes to School. Before I let Holly give a brief overview, I'm going to go ahead and just give some props to Ollie, Larry, and Greg, and even yours truly. We sort of teamed up on MDOT down at the MML, and we got, well, we got what we wanted. So, we got, you know. Yeah, so it really, really paid to have the, you know, the council staff and mayor there, because we were able to, you know, we were able to see them one-on-one and express that we needed to move forward. They understood that. And this is, and this is at a critical time, because as we know, it's the last, you know, months or whatever of the Hogan administration, and sometimes employees jump ship and you're short staff. So, that was good that we were able to do this. And I knew Holly wouldn't give herself any credit, so I thought I would do that. So, if you want to give a little overview, Holly, that'd be great. Then we'll field questions.
Thank you. So, this project with Safe Routes to School is funded at an 80-20 split between the state and the town. So, it's a $200,000 project estimated. Total cost for the state would be 160,000, 40,000 coming from the town. So, this MOU has been waited for, waited on for quite some time with the state. And so, this allows us to move forward with our RFP process, which we are already working on now, just finalizing some final details. So, that is, is close to going out after we receive state approval. But this is basically just formalizing the grant funding, the project, the town commitment to the $40,000 as well.
Very well. Any questions, Peggy?
Todd, have you had a look at it, and you're happy with it?
Yes.
Oh, then I'm happy with it.
I see.
Just a couple of questions, just so I understand better. On page five, under Project Match, it tells what you can and cannot use to match that 40,000. And so, it says, with the exception of National Recreational Trail Funds. Do we have any of those funds? I was just curious.
No.
That's what I thought. And I have another question. So, on page nine, under Section 8, Project Sponsor Shall, could you, it, I don't know if this is for Todd or for whom, could you just kind of go over A and B, just to kind of clarify exactly what we're responsible for in those two items?
It's Roman numeral eight.
Roman numeral eight on page nine.
Okay. In B.
A and B.
I guess you want to see if Todd can explain what that's all about.
Yeah, so, the question, I guess, is, you know, it just says, "In the event that MSHA undertakes future highway-related improvements within the SHA right-of-way that impact the project, the project shall sponsor, shall be responsible for the redesign and relocation of that." And I presume that's unlikely to happen, but I was just kind of curious why we would be responsible if they were the ones, you know.
I guess it's standard language, but I'll.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's pretty much it. I mean, I think B is more, what is dealing with the other project more than anything else. That's, that's, in essence, undertakes future highway-related improvements within the right-of-way. So, this would only include the right-of-way itself, which is only a small section. Okay, so, it's not like, you know, major reconstruction, anything like that. Right-of-way, that's, you know, all it would be. And then, generally, you know, when you have a small area like that, state highway or something like that. But if they were going to do the whole, a major redevelopment of that, state highway would come and redo that, too. So, they're just making sure that indeed, you know, small areas are covered.
Okay, it seems, it just, yeah, it just seems odd, that's all. That would be the language there, that we would be responsible for changes that they initiate in that right-of-way.
Anything beyond the right-of-way, I expressed to you, that would cause a little bit of heartburn? We're only talking about right-of-way, which is, they're very small.
Okay, all right, well, thank you very much. That was all I had. Appreciate it.
Larry?
Several questions. We're discussing that the Town Council authorized the mayor to execute the MOU, and yet, the MOU itself is already dated, the 21st day of June. Is that an issue?
That will be updated to July.
Okay.
That was an error.
Okay, and then, second, just to confirm, page 13 is blank. Is that correct?
It is.
It just seems odd that there's a blank page in there.
Unlucky number.
Yeah. And then, my most significant comment is on the signature page, page 15.
I have an incorrect for you.
My name is misspelled.
I wrote it down. I got it.
That's it, thank you.
Your name's misspelled.
Yeah.
Looks good to me.
S-K-I.
Oh, that's how you spell your name?
When is an Irishman going to tell a Polack how to spell a name?
You don't have an M-C or an O apostrophe in front of that name? That was a test, Larry, actually. That was just a test to see if Larry was paying attention.
I don't have anything additional. I mean, the common question that I think we all have is, is Todd's good with it and Holly? You know, that seems, makes sense to me. Has there been any input from Wayne, or is this irrelevant as far as what his input?
He has reviewed it, yes. There's been no changes recommended.
Okay.
Yeah, my question, I have a few. The first one is page three, Roman numeral two, item C. And it says in the middle, "Property owned and fee simple buyer are on perpetual easements." Is it fair to say that there are no property issues with the path of the walkway, the sidewalk?
There are a few properties that will require easements. We are working on that. Our town engineer has made a list of those properties.
Do we, do we as a town, do we have to acquire those easements prior to signing the MOU?
No.
If we can't get the easements, are we in breach of this MOU?
No.
Okay, so it's not a concern? Okay. See, my other question wants answered. And then, I want you to consider what we did recently as an example of what I'm talking about. And that was when we did the ADA portions of the sidewalk, and we used grant money to do that update. So, if it, I think Keith had hit upon this, there's no, when this project is complete, thank goodness, finally, the town of Chesapeake Beach is in charge of maintenance for all of it. And the state highway department, who like maintains our sidewalks where we have the ADA strips, there won't be any concerns about that, like us maintaining that, like all the, the full extent of the sidewalk.
We will have to plan for it and budget for it. I mean, it will be a cost to the town to maintain.
No, no, I, yeah, I understand that. I just, you know, sometimes there's questions when it comes to state highway, like 260, 261, on what we can and cannot do. And so, that's why that's all covered, kind of. We're okay with that. You know, having access and all that sort of stuff, you know, because sometimes there's been questions over, over the years on Route 260 and 261, which are not owned by the town, about what we can and cannot do. Okay, so, and all those concerns are taken care of with this MOU, for the design at least. Okay, you've answered my questions, thank you.
Thank you. Next, more good news. MOU, Board of Education?
Thank you. So, the, with the Beach Elementary new school, we've been working with the Board of Education, specifically the Director of Construction for Calvert County Public Schools. The tennis court area with the new building will no longer be needed for students as a play area. They'll have ample other spaces to play. So, they have offered to the town to review an MOU to potentially take over those tennis courts for recreational activities for community members. The town's Walkable Community Advisory Group has talked about some open space needs in terms of pickleball, tennis. It's come forward a lot with the new building. There's a lot of public input about the desire for tennis as well and keeping those courts there. So, we've already heard some public input of the desire to maintain that recreational space. So, this is really just a first draft MOU with the Board of Education we just received this week. There's a couple of things I did want to point out, and that is that there is some, a scope of work attached to this agreement from ATC Corp. And I wanted to clarify that I did get confirmation from the Board of Education that we are not locked into using this contractor, and we can have staff or in-house maintenance or contractors that we utilize make these repairs on an ongoing basis.
Okay, and before I do go to Valerie, I could tell you, you know, that's my neighborhood. I drive past there, I don't know how many times a day. You can only imagine, and for the last 30 years, it really has been used as a tennis court by mainly adults, you know. And we've done our part to, you know, maintain little areas that maybe we didn't necessarily need to. And I think, you know, Dr. Sisler did the same thing, and it really worked out well. So, this is a, this is a wonderful opportunity, you know. So, having said that.
I have a lot of problems with this MOU and the way it's written. So, I, I'll just start, if I may. So, when I read this, I was under the impression that it was still going to be owned and operated, if you would, by the BOE. So, my very first question is, is the BOE ceding us complete 24/7 access and use maintenance of that tennis court?
Yes, that was my understanding.
24/7, no restrictions. They have a ton of restrictions, and that's why I'm, so, but that's not how it was just presented in that, are we as a town taking over full use responsibility, maintenance, operation, the whole shebang, 24 hours a day, seven days a week for this property?
Do you want to refer to a specific area?
Oh, yeah.
Of the agreement that you're referring to?
Sure.
If I could just jump in a little bit.
Absolutely.
Yeah, Holly and I have spoken about this. There's going to be quite a few changes to this. I mean, this is, this, I mean, we've gone through it quite a bit, okay? And there will be a number of different changes to this. So, you know, we could go through line by line, but, you know, your answer is going to be, it's going to have to be for, you know, you know, public use, okay? Primarily, the citizens of Chesapeake Beach, but it's, and as far as the access and so forth. But mainly, it's the maintenance issues that was my biggest concern.
Mine, too.
Because, you know, especially when, you know, it was almost like they wanted all these repairs done, and they wanted the town to pay for them, you know, more than the county to pay for them. And so, Holly followed up with them, and so, not, so the maintenance that needed to be done is going to be done, and I think Holly mentioned that, in-house, okay? But the problem is that, we, so, you know, what needs to be done, you know, in-house and so forth. So, there will be, there's going to be, I think, more or less, this is a presentation of an idea that's going to be happening. But as far as, you know, any type of lock-in, this is very premature. And this, I agree with you, a lot of this just can't work. Let us, let us put together something that is closer to what we need for the plan.
Okay, then, I'll still speak in specifics, and thank you for that. But, you know, just to give you my feel and my flavor, is that we've been through this arrangement situation before, specifically with Kellym's Field, where it was a joint agreement between the county and the town. And there is a reason why we ask for ownership of that or, you know, complete control. And so, to say it simply, I do not see, I do not want to see us enter into an agreement where we pay the bill and someone else controls the property, simply stated. So, let's continue on here. And I understand, because it seems like, if that's the case, I would like to leave the arrangement like it is, because I remember the, if I remember correctly, and someone, please correct me if I'm wrong, during the whole, you know, presentations that we had regarding the school, the tennis courts were always a part of it, always. And so, all of a sudden, they're not going to be a part of it is questionable. I mean, to start, I think. So, I think there ought to be tennis courts there.
Can you explain that? I don't quite understand what you're saying.
What I'm saying is that when, when the whole design of the school came up, the tennis courts were always part of that design. And so, so, there's an expectation that there's still going to be tennis courts there. So, my first preference would be to maintain the relationship as it's currently been, where the Board of Education and the county allows the town of Chesapeake to use it off-hours after 4:30 on weekdays during in-school session, on weekends, and then on summer break. I mean, that would be my preference, is basically leave it the way it is, because I think the, it has worked well. I don't think that the elementary school is used, the tennis court, and we'll get to those comments in a second, the way a tennis court is intended to be used. They've used it, I asked my daughter this afternoon, who's a C, who just graduated, they use it for three days a week for recess, and they use it for after-school dances and other activities. And I asked her, but have you ever played tennis on it as part of, like, a gym program? And the answer was no. And so, my point is, I'm fine with the relationship as it currently stands with the town of Chesapeake Beach residents being allowed to use it as part, almost, like part of our taxpayer dollars to the county, wherein that's our open recreational space. That's not the Northeast Community Center. I'm absolutely fine with that. Let's dig into this a little bit, though, if we may. So, the way I read this, in the very, in the second paragraph, it says, "An agreement with the town related to taking over maintenance of the tennis court area, taking over maintenance of the tennis court area without any ability to control who uses it," or they want to control who uses it and when, is not a good idea. I already used my Kellym's Field example. When you have that sort of joint agreement, it's problematic. Now, if we're talking about getting full control, ownership, and use of that 24 hours a day, seven days a week, then this MOU's going to need a lot of work, but I could potentially be supportive of that, because I think we have a lack of recreational area in town. But I can't imagine why we would maintain a facility and pay for refurbishment when someone else controls it. That makes absolutely zero sense to me. So, looking at this, I also, it's like we pay for it. And in the agreement on recitals, it says, "The term of this MOU shall terminate on June 30th, 2025." So, we basically have an agreement with the county that, or Board of Education, that would last for three years. We pay for all the refurbishment, maintenance, and it ends. And what takes this place, I have no clue. If you turn to page two, that is basically our agreement on the first line, where it says, "By the town after 4:30 PM, Monday through Friday, and all day on Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays." That's what we currently have, which seems to work. And so, that's what, when I say, just maintaining the relationship as it currently is, is reflected in that sentence. However, when you go down a little bit further, it says, "And if available, will be referred back to BOE." So, they also want us to be in charge of designating or non-school-sponsored requests for use, but it has to be approved by the BOE. That's getting back us, back into that Kellym's Field arrangement, where that if we want to have an event on the tennis court, we have to refer it back to the BOE, is the way that reads in my. Then we get to the town, what the town would agree to do. So, we pay for all repairs, and it's already been, you know, talked about what the repairs would be. I think it's like over $200,000 for the repairs, and then $25,000 for annual maintenance. It's one thing for that to happen, if it's owned, operated 24 hours a day, seven days a week by the town of Chesapeake Beach. It's quite another thing if somebody else is telling us when and how we can use it. That's insanity. And it goes on to say that, oh, I had a ton of these. So, number, number six, "We would bear our responsibilities for maintenance, upkeep, and operational costs related to the facility," something that we don't have control over. And if you go to the next page, let's see. Oh, and not only that, but of course, we would have to pay for the insurance of $1 million. Not that the cost would be a million dollars, but we'd have to insure it for a million dollars. That's great. Then we move on. We get to the actual cost, so it's $220,000 according to this. And I know that Holly said that we could rebid it, which we would, because we've, I mean, this administration has gotten awesome with bidding and proposals and things like that. So, I have so many problems as I read through. I'm glad, Todd, you said that it even had a place in here, and I wish I could find it, where it asked that after a rain, that it be squeegeed. It's like, oh, my gosh. So, my question there, under the maintenance, what page was that, Peggy? I mean, we can have a just. Exhibit B. So in Exhibit B, that's why I didn't, I didn't turn that far yet. It says that you have to basically squeegee it after the rains. And my question is, does Public Works have the staff to squeegee it after every rain, for goodness sake, in order to maintain the surface? So you can see that my knee-jerk reaction after I read this, besides laughing, was I like the agreement the way it is. The way, the current agreement that we have with the, with the county and with the Board of Education, where we use it after hours. I, and I have absolutely, whatever happens, no desire to have another shared facility like we do with Kelmsfield. Either we own it, maintain it, and operate it, and our citizens have 24 hours a day use of it, or we have the current relationship that we have. And I know I took a lot of time, I'm sorry, but I read this, and I was like, oh, my gosh, no. You know, at least the way it's written. Now, I agree wholeheartedly with the Walkability Committee, and we've discussed it, the Green Team, that we need open areas, recreational facilities, and that besides the Northeast Community Center, you know, there's no, like, park in town like Dunkirk Park, or the one on Ward. We just don't have that. And, you know, it'd be nice if the county would take responsibility for this in that way, that this could be our equivalent of Dunkirk Park. But if they expect us to maintain it and pay for it, then we own it, we operate it, and it's for our residents 24 hours a day. And that's my opinion. Thanks.
Thank you. And just, you know, I guess I, this is not something that's going to be on the agenda next, next year. The purpose here was to get your thoughts. We're near prime time, obviously.
Give my thoughts.
Said them quite a few times.
Yes, I did. I made it very clear.
Charlie.
Utmost and absolute respect to every concern that Valerie just raised. In concept and keeping it at a high level, I strongly, strongly support this idea. I very much would like to have ownership and complete access to another potential green space for Chesapeake Beach residents. So, so are there submissions with the MOU, obviously? But it, but in concept, if you want my thoughts, I really, really support this, and the Walkability Committee supports it as well. There are two short questions that I have just to consider for future, for, for the MOU and for us to think about. One of them is just the proximity to a school. So they list time restrictions in here. We know that that's probably meaningless, but it does occur to me, the proximity of a school, an elementary school, you know, we want to make sure that people can go there during regular days when kids are in school, and that's not going to create a threat, that there can be parking nearby. And the other thing is, if, if this comes together, and I hope it does, we want to consider broadening what we do there, and you know this, Holly. We've, I mean, the Walkability Committee has talked about this at length. Tennis courts are great. Tennis is, is not nearly as popular as it was when I was growing up. And so there are a lot of other ways we could use this space. Maybe tennis courts, maybe some convertible courts. Winwood Key did something fairly creative in their space recently. Tennis court up in Harrington South, they've reconfigured that to be multipurpose. So I want us to consider, I'd like us to consider that as well. I think that's it. I mean, I, my point just is, I really support the concept. Utmost respect to my Valerie's concerns, if we can make it all come together.
I'll just support comments from both of my colleagues on both those points. I, yeah, I mean, it needs a lot of work, and Todd's already admitted to that, so thank you. And I'm going to just, either way, that's what, what Larry said. I, you know, Charlie, you know, I'm. Mom, I'm a, you know, I'm 100% behind, you know, trying to make this happen in a way that is beneficial to the town. We, you know, as we try to cater to a diversity of ages, you know, we want recreation for all people. I think we can make that happen. And then, you know, as, as Councilwoman Bodine pointed out, you know, we, we don't enter into agreements blindly anymore. I mean, I don't know what they did in the old days, but we don't do that blindly anymore at all. You know, there's a key to negotiation, and there's, we've been down some pitfalls, you know, before. And I'm quite confident that the, when we do get a final MOU, that it'll be something that will just need to be tweaked here and there from the town council. And we did want to, I mean, this is kind of what I was expecting, you know, but I, you never have enough good ideas, you know, in advance. So I think we're all, so far, we all agree. Keith?
Yeah, no, definitely. I really appreciate Mayor, you, and the administration having these conversations with the Board of Education and bringing these ideas forward. My concerns have been expressed, I think, very well by both Valerie and Charlie. So I don't really have a lot to add there, and the fact that it's recognized as MOU.
Look forward to the final version.
Yes, definitely.
Like Charlie, I agree with the open space concept, getting more space for people to use. But I, reading this, I was more towards Valerie's side of, we can't hardly use it, but we're going to pay a fortune. So providing that is not the case, and the school isn't going to have dances on it, and then we repair it, that's all right. So look forward to the corrected version.
We've been, we've been quite successful not taking the county's first offer on, on everything, I guess. Okay, very good, Council, thank you. Holiday lighting additions? I'll let Holly give a brief review of this.
Great, thank you.
This news?
Okay, so the town has been approached by the American Legion post 206. They would like to purchase several holiday displays at their cost, and they are requesting that the town, obviously, if the displays are approved by town administration, to be consistent with the town's current display, that we would kind of incorporate them into the installation and setup by the town. So it would require the town to assemble them, set them up, break them down, store them, ensure electrical connection for them as well. And by doing this, the town could have the opportunity to move several displays that are currently on the 260 median strip to the south side of town, who has been currently asking for more displays. So I do just want to correct something in my report here. Councilman Partiak pointed out, the one-time cost is actually $4,302. And that is a combination of a portion of the assembly and installation cost. So that $7,550 is a combination of the first-year setup and the annual installation cost. We have the electrical equipment expense cost, and then a portion of the electrical expense to make the connections as well, south of town. So total one-time cost is $4,302, and then the annual cost to the town would be $7,250. I have provided really the only information that American Legion has been able to provide us, which is their, their price quote, which gives you the size and dimensions and the description of the displays. These are custom-built displays, so unfortunately, I cannot provide an image of what they would particularly look like, but the town would definitely have to approve them before they were installed.
Hey, thank you, Holly. And before I go to Peggy, you know, Holly and I spoke about this in, in length. Obviously, it sounds great. I was glad to hear that it was going to be in front of the Legion, that, you know, right, that Legion right there. And I, my only concern, which, which Holly alleviated, is basically, you know, I'd like to take a peek at what it's going to be first, you know, just, you know, I mean, I'm not sure I need, you know, you know, combat up there with, you know, guns and stuff like that. But I mean, we do love and respect our military, and certainly, right in front of the American Legion. We're fortunate to have a Legion on a highway like that, and it could really be special if it's done right. So that's sort of where we are now, but I think we're covering ourselves in the event that we don't like it.
For placement? It's going to be in the median, right? It's not in front, it's just in front, but on the median.
Yes.
Okay, because when you said in front, I had this vision of everybody looking like this when they drive down the road. I thought, well, that would be good. And we will leave some Christmas ones, won't we?
Yes, yes, that median strip has, has a lot of displays, so, so part of it is a Christmas tree. So they do have a red, white, and blue Christmas tree as part of the display, which is very similar to the one that we have at Veterans Park.
Very good. And the $39,000, that's what they say they're covering, right?
Yes.
Okay, very good. No further questions, thank you.
So, okay, so this was really nice of them to offer, and I think it's a great opportunity. I, I totally agree with you, Mayor, in, in what you had said in terms of supporting our military troops. I do wonder about how it will change the character of that, to have seven kind of military-themed displays right there in that area. That's currently not, and I'm wondering if it could be spread out a little bit more, or somehow softened, so it's not such a big change. Oh, and also, you know, perhaps they could put one or two on their side of the road, instead of all of them right there in the middle. Closer to the Legion, to spread them out a little bit more, because I know they want them there in front of the Legion, which is totally understandable, and I think appropriate, but it seems like an awful lot. Yeah, that's my main comment, and I would definitely want to be, would like to know what they look like, for sure.
Yeah, yeah, my only thing was just tasteful, and I would just, you know, look to Jay and Holly, just to, I mean, if it's tasteful and it fits in, it could be real winner, you know? So we're.
And I, and I agree, because in my mind, I'm thinking really big. And maybe it's not going to be really big, and I'm thinking, seven really big new displays could be overpowering. But, you know, if they're smaller, or how they're done, it will matter, so.
And that gives us more, we have more displays to move to the other, other areas of town.
There's, some of my comments have already been expressed. I just wanted to, again, urge, as we review the drafts of the actual displays, that there is some holiday theme incorporated into them, as well as the logos. And I was, have to say, a little bit surprised at the difference in price of the various logos from Space Force at only $2,871, up to Navy, which is $10,507. I just, I'd be curious to see what that difference is, so.
The Navy is just a better brand.
Yeah, I knew you'd say that.
It's actually the size of battleship.
You got to pay the price, man.
Thank you, that's all I had.
Thank you, Larry.
I hate to, I hate to even remotely be, be Grinch of it. I do have some concerns I just want to express. I mean, for a couple of things, maybe just building a bit on what Keith said. You know, that, where the Legion is also is, is just prime real estate for people coming into the town on 260. Six, I, I, I would like to know the, I would like to, I don't know how to do it. I'd like to have a perception of what the size is going to be, or, I know, but that's, how do you, how do you, it's hard to picture that in your mind, I think, anyway. I also would like to consider, you know, again, with utmost respect to what Peggy said, I'd like to consider that maybe if there's six of them, maybe one or two of them do end up on the other side of the road, right in front of the Legion, which would also tie in the theme. I know Jay's probably shooting darts at me here, because that creates whatever electrical problems, get it over the road, et cetera, et cetera. But then you'd have it, that's one way to spread it out a little bit, is to use. So I put that suggestion out there, and then I, you know, I might even question whether there should be a Space Force, whether we're far enough along yet to have a Space Force logo. That's probably not something I should weigh in on, though that's what the Legion wants, they could have it. But to me, maybe it's a little premature for a Space. I guess I'll leave it at that. I was going to make some jokes about my favorite reindeer display not being moved, but, you know, the bathing, pooping reindeer. But it's, that's a level of detail probably I need to get into now. So some minor concerns, I.
The same ones I had, yeah. Valerie?
Yeah, having a father who served in Korea as a Marine at the age of 17, I, I could not be happier with this idea. I mean, I think you could, if it's done tastefully, like everyone has expressed, I can't think of anything better. We have Veterans Park, we have the flag there, I think it'd be a great addition. This, this idea is so indifferent from what the BOE did, where pay for it, and you have no control, where this is someone coming in and saying, "We'll pay for it if you want it, here you go." And I'm a little shocked at the cost that they're getting, because I was, was under the impression that Christmas displays were quite a bit more expensive, actually. But it's really impressive, and I saw the discount that they did receive. Speaking of, I do have a few actual questions. One is, I can't remember, do we have to do a change request with our electrical company? Do we have a multi-year agreement with them regarding our Christmas displays? And if so, I'm supportive of doing that change request for electrical, I'm just asking if we need one.
That is correct, we do have a multi-year agreement, and, and we actually did request a change, both for installation and labor and electrical, and that is attached to your packet.
Yeah, I thought we'd need a change request for that, I thought it was multi-year. Next, I'd like to talk a little bit about the south side. I think we were provided a map of where they might go. And I've also heard resident comments about the lack of, whether it be, you know, lighting like we have with the streetscape, or Christmas decorations, or what have you, in that area of town. So as we think about where we can practically put the displays that are currently on the median that would be moved, I request that they, you know, like, really be spread out. I know it said south of, like, Mirs and Harbor, but I mean, far south of that, where maybe we can get permission to do something at the elementary school, maybe between 15th and 16th Street, on the west side, where we had a garden at one time. You can see where the bush, the plants were, were at one time. Maybe do something in the median at Old Bayside, where that little triangle is. I'm not sure what, but my request is to spread them out a bit along that area, so that the south side on 261 feels included also. So I wouldn't want to see them, just like on the other side from Rowlands, for example, you know, spread them out a bit. And I think that'd be lovely. Other than that, that was all my comments on this, and I think it's a terrific idea.
Okay, we'll see where we go with this one.
Could I, could I just make one more comment?
It's a wonderful topic, Christmas lights.
You know, maybe one of the things, I know they want them in front of the hall, but maybe one of the things we could do is put some of them down by the Veterans Memorial. You know, that would be a way to soften it up, you still get all of them, and you still get a nice view when you come in of those displays.
Good idea.
To be honest with you, when I first heard about this, I, we can still talk, I actually thought it was going to be at Veterans Park. I just thought that, that was it. And, and I was okay with that, I was just, you know, you know, in my head, I'm thinking, how to keep it Christmasy at Veterans Park? You know, and it sort of went to the, the comment, maybe you said, or somebody said, just to make sure we keep the, you know, Christmas theme, you know, no matter how much we honor our armed forces, but we still have to, have to keep that holiday theme, you know? And in terms of the south side, as, as the key south sider here, I can tell you, it's sort of like, half the people like lights, half the people like speed bumps, and half the people don't. Half the people in the south side say, "Keep them damn Christmas lights out of here, because we like being quiet, and no one knowing where we are." So that, that's not win-win, I can tell you that. But we move forward in a lot of not-win-win situations, that's why we're here, you know? So anyhow, you want to decide, I don't know, it's Christmas lights, everybody want to go another round, I'm cool, you know?
No, I just have one more comment. Let me tell you two things I miss with the Christmas lights. One was whoever came up with the clever idea, do you know the crab Christmas lights? There was one year where they moved every day, like they were escaping to the bay. It was amazing, and it was adorable. I don't know whose idea it was.
It was my idea, the whole thing was my idea.
It was gray pat. I know it's a lot of work probably for Public Works and stuff, but no, they would escape, they would, you could see them, you could see them move.
I know, that was pretty cool, that one. I think it was even a guess where they're going to be next time.
Absolutely, it was awesome.
Yeah.
And I'll tell you the other thing I miss. When I, when I first moved here, there were things like, on, on the streetlights going down 261, there were like anchors and that sort of thing, and candy canes that were the streetlight. You know, like the decorations going down the street, and I miss those two. But especially the crabs moving, that was hilarious.
We should have did that during COVID, when people were so bored, and they had nothing to do, that would have been great.
But the street, the streetlights, the ones I miss, I think now we do Reeves, which are nice, but not quite the same as like a candy cane or what have you. But the street, the streetlights, I, the ones I miss, I think now we do Reeves, which are nice, but not quite the same as like a candy cane or what have you. Um, I miss those.
We'll say Jay still moves the crab.
I do. I was going to say something just for the room, when you're thinking about this. So we've gone LED everything, so we can take power a lot longer than we used to. Saves us materials and, uh, meters. But when you do move to the south side where we have lights now is because we have power or borrowing it for, from an HOA or something. So you have to consider that when we do move south on this map, if there's nothing there now, it's because we have no power. So that would be an addition if we need to bring power to any of those areas. Um, and then, then, so then I did start the crab, the escapement. The first year it kind of went over the wall at Veterans. So we went from moving it once a day or every other day. We move it one time a week. We did it last year, we moved it around. It's kind of neat.
Maybe it wasn't as dramatic as it was the first year when you noticed it. But, um, just to discuss what you discussed about lack of potential electricity or whatever on the south side, that's a problem that should be addressed anyways because we ought not to, yep, not to be left behind from that sort of thing. So if that needs to be a discussion, we can do that in another work session, whether or not there's certain things that would bring their infrastructure up to the level of the other infrastructure in the HOAs or in the town. So that's another way of looking at it too. It's an opportunity, um, to bring that part of town up to speed, if you will, when it comes in terms of infrastructure.
Okay, very good. We love Christmas lights. Council Lightning Round, I'll begin with you, Valerie, you want to?
Um, I'm good.
Holly, thank you.
Yeah, two things real quick. Yeah, Christmas in July is a fun discussion, that's for sure. I just have this vision of Pat coming into the holiday party, you know, like Kramer with the Kenny Rogers Roaster sign, after we move all the lights just right on the hill there, right in front of your house, he's perfect. Anyone doesn't know that reference.
I do a good Kramer, so you'll.
Do you do a good Kramer?
Oh, yeah.
That, that's going to keep me up at night. Um, and then I just want to, uh, do a shout out to where we are with some of the walkability projects, shocking absolutely no one. Um, you know, uh, we had a great meeting with public feedback and, uh, we're going to have three or four, uh, you know, Holly, correct me if I'm wrong, but not harshly because I'm happy about this, uh, you know, we're going to have some projects shovels in the ground in, uh, very soon. And we're going to see some real tangible results, uh, from the work that we did. If people have questions about that or they want more details, check out the public feedback, which is not just walkability, it's other stuff as well, but all around, open space, green space, it all ties together and, uh, it's very exciting. So I just want to do a shout out to, to all the, to Holly, to Peggy, to everyone who's, who's participated in that.
I just wanted to offer congratulations and heartfelt thanks to Holly and their all-town staff on their fireworks. It was great to see them again this year and they looked fabulous. And Mayor, I'm sure you'll take credit for the beautiful weather that we had that night. It worked out well as well. Thank you.
You're welcome, Larry.
I've, I've no updates to.
He said, I'm not following that.
Well, actually I, I also wanted to congratulate the staff and Holly on the fireworks. Um, I had gotten a few questions from people saying, are you having them? Because a lot of towns had to cancel and there were no technicians, there were no fireworks. They were saying, is Chesapeake Beach really doing it? I said, we must be or we know and we don't, haven't heard, so we are. And we did, but there were a lot of towns that had to cancel it, so bravo that we didn't.
Well, and I'm, I must tell you Peggy, you know, they tried that funny business with Holly Wall and, uh, they didn't win. Can I, uh? I'll leave it at that.
I was going to add one other thing that, you know, I was worried they weren't going to happen. I was texting, I was like, well, I, I remember the barge being out there two, three days in advance. So I was expressing concern, but then I, I, I understood Holly was actually, she had a lighter in each hand and then.
That kept the fire. I think we got more because they were afraid Holly was going to come back at them. Okay, listen, um, thank you, everybody. I think we can have a closed session here because, um, there's nobody here. We, all we need to do is send Brittany home and, and lock the doors. Okay, so if you do your part, we'll do, we'll do our part.
Um, you're on, you're, it's up to you to lock the doors, but.
Yeah. Thank you, Brittany. Um, I'm going to wait, but no, thank you very much. Um, in fact, I, before I take that, I'm just going to take a minute. I'll give everybody a minute and then I'm going to, uh, go into closed session.